Is that time? Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Chairman Good. Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaword.
Here.
Ms. Noack. Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer. And Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Okay, we've had the agenda for a few days. Are there any items we need to add to the agenda or anything to delete? If not, we will follow the agenda then as distributed to us. We have the minutes of the October the 12th meeting. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, we don't have anybody signed up under the general citizen comments. Now, we do have two items that were, or three, three items, that were advertised for public hearing at this meeting. The first one is from... The first one is from southern states to construct an open front fifty by sixty metal storage shed adjacent to their main building, 201 William Street. The parcel is owned, limited industrial, which requires a special use permit as required for any structure that's in that district. In the code, it would also require landscaping or screening for these structures, but the staff recommends that that not be required because this structure is behind the main building and it's an open shed. We have the application and all of the information that we usually have, there is a public hearing, tax map info, and represented from southern states if we have any questions.
What's the purpose of the shed?
Just additional storage. I mean, our business is just growing. Just just for storage. Uh, even the house, the beef mineral, that sort of thing.
Any other questions or any other information on this application?
We only had one phone call. It was one of the neighbors and after discussing it with him, he, he supported the request for the special use permit.
Is it removable if you leave the building or take it away?
Yeah, it's, um, it's, it's like a metal, the metal cardboard style, which it's gonna be on concrete and anchored down. So yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be taken down and removed.
Again, any other questions or info? Okay, are we ready to move on this then?
Public hearing, open and close if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, we do, we do need to officially open the public hearing. Don't have anybody that's signed up. Officially open the public hearing and again, we've had discussion and I don't believe there's any other, so we'll close that. Okay, now, if we're ready for a motion.
I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the town council of the special use permit for southern states to construct an open front fifty by sixty foot metal storage shed adjacent to their main building at 201 William Street, tax map forty-two A four dash A dash fifty-nine in the limited industrial district with no required screening as presented.
We have the roll call, please.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
And Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
The second item for public hearing is a special use permit application to operate a lodging house at ten Jackson Street. We have the tax map number forty-two A three dash A dash one twenty-one. This is in the high-density residential R-three district. We have the definition for a lodging house and there are six recommended conditions. These are the standard conditions for an application of this type. Occupancy of no more than six guests. Off-street parking is required. There can be one identification sign not exceeding four square feet. If there are any meals provided, it's only for the guests that are renting the bedrooms. And of course, as of any, within the other business, the owners would need to obtain a town business license and collect the appropriate taxes and remit those to the town. And also, the special use permit shall not transfer if the property is sold or if membership, interest, competition of the holding company. That changes. Okay, and again, we have the application tax map. We have a property management team plan from the owners. We have rules that people would need to agree to if they're renting this property. Any additional information that we need to say?
Well, let me, I just noticed I didn't include a suggested motion, so let me jot that down real quick for something.
It is a thorough, um, application.
I was thinking the same thing. I appreciate the thorough application.
Anything else that you would like to mention to us?
Just here, you know, for any questions or, you know, um, you know, I'm the owner, by the way, I'm also an applicant and I'm trying to answer any questions from the public and trying to maintain neighborhood as, you know, normal as used to be, while, you know, renting my place to, um, to some like front-term rental renters.
Is this the residence you will be at or just for?
Uh, I probably will be here, you know, for, for the holidays like Christmas or Thanksgiving for my families. I'm currently living in Los Angeles, Virginia. Uh, it's not far, it's, you know, one hour, one, one thirty, one hour thirty minutes away from here. So I'll probably, you know, come by, uh, from time to time to enjoy the Luray area.
You've got a good onsite manager there in Eric Bennett, yeah. Pretty reliable.
Okay, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, uh, 'cause I got a, uh, I'm sure you're bringing, bringing, right? She is being referred by one of my business partners that did, you know, wonderful job for my business, you know, in, 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 you know, the property at Luray as well. But that's not my, this is my first time being, being there, so, yeah.
All right, any o- any other information or questions we have here? Okay, I will officially open the public hearing and the only one we had to speak was the owners. That's it there. Not hearing anybody else and we'll close the public hearing. And I think as Tracy mentioned, there is quite a plan here. Different people to take care of the cleaning and the maintenance, plumbing if needed, appliance repair. We need a plan like this at our house.
In the same way, I'm like, that's a good plan.
Very thorough.
So I, I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit to operate a lodging house at ten Jackson Street with the convention, conditions identified as presented.
Second. And roll call, please.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Okay, our, our third, um, public hearing matter for this evening is an addition to the, an amendment to the comprehensive plan dealing with transportation. We had some information on this last month. It involves replacing the westbound West Main Street Route 211 Business Bridge over dry run. As noted, the structure was built in nineteen twenty-three and is rated in fair condition based upon most recent inspection. And as we have here, it says if, uh, this is amended, it would incorporate the raised town transportation plan into other resources that are included in the plan. Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this needs to be in the plan to line up the financing that's needed.
That's correct. It, it is listed in there now as a, you know, potential future project for transportation. And we're kinda out of projects, so this is the next one on the list to try to pursue funding for. So introducing this, holding the public hearing here and then at the town council will result in a resolution that allows it to be given an identification number at the state level, included on the town's six-year improvement plan, and then I can go, uh, start pursuing funding. We'll have, uh, some additional funding, I think, available to get the preliminary engineering report done and then I can go after the real money to do the construction. But that typically takes anywhere from four to six years to line up and we have about four to six years left before this thing gets to a sufficiency rating where it's probably gonna be problematic. So just need to start now. Uh, do wanna make one correction, Mr. Chairman. It is located on East Main Street, uh, not West Main Street. And the inclusion of the transportation plan, which is a separate document into other resources, that allows us to update that as needs and funding arise without having to come back to you folks every single time to update the comprehensive plan or public hearings. So having that as an additional resource will help us in the future.
Okay, we do need to have a public hearing on this, so I'll open the public hearing. We didn't have anybody to sign up, so we'll close the same public hearing. Any other discussion or questions about adding this into the comprehensive plan in order to get the bridge replaced somewhere down the road?
That's a great idea and forward-thinking on the town, so thank you.
Everything I touch takes ten years. If I don't start now, I won't be ready in ten years, so.
But, but it does happen.
It does happen.
Just like down here on Main Street and...
We, we've been very fortunate in the past fifteen years. Our partners have provided us with in excess of twelve million dollars to take care of most of the major capital projects, transportation-related in Luray and hopefully gonna pursue a few more pedestrian-related projects and then this will be the next big, major construction, you know, project. I'm liking this one a whole lot better, Ronnie. It's, it's in a great spot. It's not in the middle of downtown. I got easy detours. There's nobody around. It's a great place to replace the bridge, you know, compared to down here. So, yeah.
Main Street Bridge wasn't fun, was it?
The dinner on the bridge was cool.
It was good, yeah, that's good.
We should do that again.
That was cool. I, I'm not sure anybody wanna have dinner on the dry-run bridge, but...
You never know.
No, I, I think that there were some things, but it was a good year. Um, we made it through. Nobody, I know that they thought it was the end of the world, but amazingly, everybody survived and we're still here, so I think this one will be a little easier.
Okay, are we ready to move on this one?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the transportation project portion of the comprehensive plan amendment and incorporate Luray's town transportation plan into the comprehensive plan as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Okay, those are the ones for action this evening.
Do you have anything else on your list, Brian?
We are looking at a ready, set, go project in the Boomfield. So what that is, is a new program by VDOT to enable some initial planning monies, no match on our behalf, to get some projects kick-started. That's a three or four-phase project. The first phase would extend, um, probably a ten-foot wide shared-use path, multi-use trail. Uh, hopefully, I'd love to get away with six or eight, but I think they're gonna make it to a ten, ten footer. From First Street out past Luray Avenue to Fifth, down to Fourth, out Sixth to the Rec Park, uh, which would connect the schools and ultimately downtown via sidewalk to the Rec Park, uh, as well as those neighborhoods in there. The second phase would be on Third Street and connect Luray Avenue to the East Luray Shopping Center. Crosswalk's already there, just waiting for a trail to get to there to use it. Uh, and then Project Three would, that one might have to be built in two phases 'cause it's pretty long. Project, uh, the next one would be on Third, on Ninth Avenue from Third to Village Place. Uh, we have a lot of citizens there. Some of them are, um, mobility challenged, some of them have access, uh, issues and so being able to connect them to that trail work up to East Luray Shopping Center may provide some mobility and some safety for them to get to a shopping center and, you know, grocery stores and things like that. So, um, that's a pretty aggressive pedestrian project that we're looking at. First Street already has sidewalks and this, this project would kinda divide the Boomfield in half so that the neighborhood, you know, could come to that thing from both sides and use it safely so we don't have kids walking in the edges of streets and on the shoulders and stuff like that. So ultimately, you know, you could tie into that and then do extensions out into the Boomfield area, you know, where we have the higher-density R-four, so that's one, uh, project. Of course, the driver-on-bridge project is a major one. It looks like the West Main intersection will occur. The West Main Intersection Improvement Project may wrap up, um, Thanksgiving week. So they're gonna be three and a half months ahead of schedule. So I think that they're gonna try to get out of there, um, by next week, if not this week. They're working very hard to
Very hard, okay.
Wrap that project up and, and, and move on to, that way where they can put, uh, another half of crew down on Memorial Drive, which is also progressing faster than scheduled, thankfully, knock on wood. And they're trying to get as much as they can done before winter, you know, gets here in earnest. But, uh, that project's going fairly well too. Our stakeholders have been very cooperative. The MRI transport truck has been the biggest challenge for that, for that project, just like it was for the intersection project that we did, so. So far, everybody's playing nice, um, on that, on that job, so I'd love to get that one wrapped up.
Memorial Drive looks nice. It'll be nice, I think.
It'll be nice. It'll be, it'll be very, uh, it'll be a lot safer. They have pedestrian access now. Uh, it will have the improved stormwater drainage. It'll have better street lighting. It'll be wider, um, so there'll be a lot of good things that are gonna happen there. Of course, when we did the intersection project, we set that up with a crosswalk across Main Street and then a sidewalk that would extend all the way around to the hospital campus, so looking forward to that. The hospital's looking forward to that. So I think that'll be, uh, some good things that'll take place. Thank you.
Okay, in the updates and discussions, we have two special use permits that will be coming up next month. I think the first one...
Is that one that was presented before?
It was here and they withdrew it for a month or so and...
And they've requested that it be reconsidered, so yes, sir.
Right. Uh, again, we have the information to look at this time and the public hearing will be next month. The first one is the special use permit for a lodging house at one oh nine Mechanic. And we have the information that we usually need. Any questions on this one at this point? Be ready to take another look at that, uh, next month. And the second one that we had on our agenda is the signs for D.R. Horton Homes Out.
They kinda jumped the gun and put little signs out before, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
So, so have we made exceptions before?
Yeah, uh, that's what I wanted to know too, like...
Well, I, I'm not aware of any being issued, um, but the, the, the code does provide, uh, planning commission and council with some latitude as far as allowing signs that are non-conforming to the code.
Okay, so then I maybe back my question. Have we denied requests before?
Uh, the town has denied sign permits, yes. And this is the first time that someone's come...
Scared about onsite, but off-site is the problem for me.
Uh, yes, sir. There's, um, yes, sir.
And then in trying to figure out where, you know, these little, the pictures are really little. So then I tried the thing with my camera and then to try to blow it up and it didn't. And then I looked at the one, where was it that gives the, the full map? Oh, yeah, on the back page here. And right in the little corner, like where the dentist office is, it says one sign. So I don't, didn't know if that was intentional or just, you see where it says right there on the corner?
I believe that's one of the directional signs.
'Cause that's right there at the dentist office.
Yeah, and all the signs are there now.
It's there now, okay, so.
If you'd like to...
There's several of these that are, there are.
And they had installed a number of signs in VDOT's ride-of-way and had not made any effort to seek permits from them, so they have been removed by, by VDOT. We, we are allowing them to remain in place while they go through the permit process. And we'll see how planning commission and council desire to proceed.
Um, for, for next month, can we have a clearer diagram of this?
I agree with every, I wanna see where every sign is gonna go, 'cause, uh, can't...
We can, we can do that. We can ask them for that, yes.
Yeah, this, this four-by-eight was gonna be here and this, uh, four-by-six is gonna be over there.
Uh, one thing to add, I don't know whether you were here on planning commission then, but there has been one exception that was considered by council. I don't know whether it came before planning commission. I think they came in and appealed directly to council. It was, uh, Walmart, when Walmart went in, um, their initial sign, you remember that one at all? That's been a long time. Our sign ordinance never envisioned a building that would be three hundred and fifty feet long. So it had a hundred and fifty square foot maximum on the commercial sign. Well, a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and fifty square feet on that massive building front would've been looking about that big, you know, from the parking lot. So that one was the only one that I, I know of that the council dealt with. I don't think the planning commission did. The council dealt with that one directly and they made an exception for that just simply because the ordinance never envisioned a building that would be that massive, that would need a sign that big, but, um, that's the only one that I'm aware of.
And, and that's the Walmart sign that's actually on the building?
Current one's on the building. Yeah, the pickup sign that's on there now down on the other end, that one actually did meet, um, uh, square footage requirements. Uh, and because they're letters only, they have no background, so you only really have to calculate the s- the size of the actual letters and, and determine the square footage. But the big Walmart, big word that says Walmart, there's no way that that would, you know, our ordinance.
Okay, so, sounds like we need some more information for next month.
Are they having trouble selling their plot there? Do you know?
They're actually selling fairly well now.
They're in Melanita sign.
Well, I think what the, uh, I would anticipate with the future, uh, the, the expansion, um, of the next eighty townhomes, I'm sure that we will, they're, they're testing the waters to see what they would need to do for the, the next battery of signs.
You sure do see a lot of signs if you go outside of this area around Winchester or Northern Virginia. There are signs for housing companies all over the place. All right, we'll pick that up next month. Um, we do have two other papers that were up here at our places this evening. Let's look at the code amendment first, um, from the town council. They've asked us to consider an amendment to chapter five eighteen dealing with commercial vehicles. And this would deal with basically tractor-trailers being parked in residential areas. And, and letting them sit there to run, to keep them charged up and all of that. And I know we just got this this evening, but if I'm reading it correctly, uh, it would change section five eighteen so that it would be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to keep, park, or store one of those vehicles in R-one, R-two, R-three, or R-four or on any residential part of a planned neighborhood development district. And that would apply to any tractor-truck or semi-trailer designed to be used with a tractor... And that would apply to any tractor truck or semi-trailer designed to be used with a tractor truck as defined in the state code. I believe the town council discussed this Monday night.
Yes, sir. Some of the items that they wanted the planning commission to consider would be inclusion of a special use permit. Or availability of a special use permit so that the town could consider parking in certain instances on a case-by-case basis. They also expressed concern about. People's employment as far as the need to be able to, to have these vehicles at their properties. And so, again, this isn't something that I, I think we're going to be able to. Develop a, a plan quickly, but the, the council did want the planning commission to. Vet any concerns or any, any issues that there might be with it while weighing the impact that these vehicles would have on adjacent properties. Again, this, this did originate from a, a. Complaint to our police department where a, a vehicle was routinely running overnight to charge the batteries and it disrupted the.
Where, where was that?
I don't know the exact location.
One complaint or multiple complaints?
I know it was just one instance. I don't know how many complaints came from the, the truck being there. But right now, they're outside of a, the, the noise ordinance. There's nothing that. The town could, could do as, as far as enforcement. And this, this would not be unlawful. This would simply be a zoning violation. But it would give the town the ability to have. Cost to have a vehicle like this removed if the town did receive a complaint from, from an.
Like we need more, more information there, honestly, before we kind of go there. I, I feel like I want to know where it's at and why and.
What do you feel? Something I'd like to know where you couldn't drive to town a tractor truck? Unless it was going to level?
Yep, there, there, there is a restriction of that, yes, sir. But if, if you're taking it to your residence, that would be. That would allow you to, to drive it there.
What about idling limitations, too? Yeah, I don't know if.
I don't know that we have, and, and I, we have the ability to do that sort of thing. Right now, the only thing that the, the town.
Yeah, routinely to charge its batteries. How long it was that?
Probably had the freezer on there and the freezer.
No, no, it was charging the batteries. The, the, the explanation that I understand is that the, the, the vehicle had. Would routinely run the ba, or run the engine to charge the battery to full charge so that at a cold start. It would be able to turn over and start cleanly.
I'm skeptical of that.
I'm only imparting what, why, what was told to the police.
Plug it up to your house with a stitching cord to wind the block up.
That's what we used to do.
Lockers, yes, sir.
To charge your battery, you need a charger.
And again, it, it's, it, it really isn't site-specific. It's more, is this an issue that the town should. Establish some, some level of expectancy that if you own a home in town, that a tractor trailer would not be parked next to you.
I, I get that for sure.
So we are not to act on this tonight, correct?
No, this was, the town council has referred consideration of this ordinance amendment to the planning commission. For you to discuss and develop whatever recommendations the planning commission would have regarding this issue. If you wish to proceed with the, the drafted code amendment, if there's changes that you would like to make. Again, adding in a, a specific requirement that a, a special use permit could be considered if this was implemented. So that on a case-by-case basis, there can be consideration. Or any other issues that, that may come out of your discussion.
Can we table this?
Well, it's not really a table. There's no action tonight.
It's just an FYI right now.
Yes.
This is a just-in-motion.
That was for the town.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this goes to town council item.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
So the, this will simply be a discussion item for the next meeting, two or three, however long that the commission wishes to, to discuss.
All right, one other one that we again had at our place this evening. Will be an upcoming special use permit application for a short-term rental at fourteen Roomback Avenue.
It is in the R3. High-density zoning district, which does require the ISUP.
I was just going to make sure that it was R3.
Did the town ever consider limiting these, these things? I mean.
Council has discussed it. That is part of the reason that the provision that it doesn't convey to future owners was incorporated. And. There, there, there is awareness and discussion by council that at some point. The number of, of short-term rentals. Could potentially impact the availability of, of residential, either long-term rental or, or residential homes in, in the town. And we'll just need to keep aware of that and see when we reach that point. The expectation is also that potentially at some point, the demand for short-term rentals. Will, will reduce and then.
Like any market will come and go. Is there a number you've thought about or a tipping point that, that the council is thinking of or?
I don't know that we've thought of any, while it seems like we have gotten a lot, I think it's less than ten that we've approved over the past two or three years. Which, you know, out of the, the two thousand homes that we have is, is, is a small portion, but I don't know where it becomes a, a concern. One percent of, of.
Available housing or. Or, or think about it on the people who have lodging, like the Men's Lynn and the Caverns and other Delaware North. I mean, we're all competing in the same space.
Yes.
So you said ten over the last two years and we've discussed three here this evening.
We have. So this will, this will bring it up to, to potentially thirteen.
All in one night, so.
Yeah, and they, they do seem to be increasing in, 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 in the number that are coming into us, but. The total number, I believe, is still right around ten that we've approved.
Do you know the percentage of homes? In, available homes versus, versus, you know, short-term rentals in the, in the town?
It was my understanding that there was a period in, of time that the town. Did not require a special use permit. I guess the year or two before the town adopted it, it was kind of a.
Yeah, for state code was kind of clarified and, because it had kind of exploded. And it started with the Airbnb issue, which was a little misleading because it wasn't technically a B and B, but could not be a technically. It was more of a short-term rental. And as soon as Virginia codified that, then a lot of municipalities started to adopt it. But there was a two-year period there where. We probably had. Ten or fifteen maybe that we issued business license to that had no special use permit. There was no restriction on which zoning district they could be operating in. And. Town council and planning commission with PC's advice said, you know, absolutely not in the R1, R2. And then if you're going to do it in the others' residential, you got to have a special use permit so that the neighbors can kind of weigh in on the situation if they want to. And because it is a, you know, basically it's a business. You're operating a business and they, they did not want that in the low, low-density residential. So at that point, we codified it. And then since then, we've probably added another one, Steve's saying ten, fifteen, so far. So. We're maybe at thirty. That we collect business license, short-term rental on, that are true short-term rentals. That are outside of a hotel or motel or.
And, and there's probably another five or ten that are in the commercial business district that.
It's by right, yeah.
Special use permit.
Yeah, they're by right use.
So what the, what the number is, I don't know, but it is a, a discussion. And it is considered by council. At, at some point, there may not be, it may be. More restrictive. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Before this comes back next month? Okay, any other updates?
Well, Brian gave you an update on most all of the, the, the transportation projects. Wish you all have a, a very happy Thanksgiving next week.
I believe our next meeting is December fourteenth. I think Tracy kind of mentioned earlier that. There are some appointments that need. To be made by the town council to reappoint. Some of our commission members. I personally hope that. Each of us will let our council member know that we want to be reappointed. Get that done.
Yes.
Yeah, I think there were four of us. Four of us that. Again, I'm hoping will be reappointed for the next four years.
Happy to serve, yes.
I'm happy to serve. And you too, Ron?
You have two more years.
Hopefully John will be, too, yes.
He's not here, just go ahead and put him back.
He's in Lake Tahoe.
Yeah, he voted, he voted by that.
That, that will be an item on the, the December town council. Consideration of reappointment.
That's in January.
You got to reappoint some, somebody.
I know, that's in January.
Let's see, one, one of those, the new councilperson. He won't be able to make his appointment till January, is that right?
Well, that's, that would be Mr. Shire appointed, appointed Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, okay.
And so we will contact Alex to confirm that he's comfortable with that. But I, I, I'm not aware that there'll be any issue.
Great, great.
Now you got to watch that John Schaefer.
All right, if there's no other business, then we've completed our agenda. So we are adjourned.